Good evening and welcome to the Carney Board of Alderman. Please rise for the National Anthem. Our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If anyone would like to sing the National Anthem, they can. Have you had a chance to take roll?
Roll has been taken. Everybody is present, just the mayor, and you do have a call.
Thank you. Under consent agenda, is there any questions under any of those items? If not, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
You have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor is gone, so we don't really have any mayor's remarks tonight. So we're going to move right on to the administrators' report.
Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Board President, excuse me. We are proposing that we move our first meeting in September to August the 29th, the 5th, Monday. And that is important to us to get our necessary approvals from the school board for our pickleball court project and still give us time to authorize a cooperative purchasing contract with McConnell and Associates before their bid expires on September the 1st. Also alleviates us the need for us to have a Tuesday meeting following Labor Day. So if I could get the board to formally make that change, a motion be in order.
Is everybody going to be available? Maybe you can be available?
I make a motion to move our first meeting in September to the last Monday in August, August 29th. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Board President.
Yep.
We are continuing to make emergency expenditures to the Washington Street walkway to assist Grant Russell of Norton and Smith in his inspection and evaluation of the east wall of 115 East Washington. Today, they installed some temporary shoring for the exterior. It was kind of an emergency thing that came up the end of about 3 o'clock this afternoon, and they've still got more shoring work to do. Also, Grant Russell asked that they put temporary shoring inside the Brown Building, which is something that they originally didn't, we didn't know about when they quoted the 5,000. And so that 5,000 is turning into $10,000 from scaffolding, from KC Scaffolding. And again, this is an emergency item that I recommend that the board approve so we can make our commitment to them on this emergency shoring.
We're going to have to have a motion to increase that from 5,000 to 10,000?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion?
Some.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And I've got enclosed pictures of the spray part bucket that the bearing had broke on our splash park. And we were just visiting with Ryan Markot, who says that that part is being shipped down from Canada, and we hope to have it before the end of the season and get that back into operation. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Board President, sorry. I'm used to that.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Public requests and petitions. Tonight, I believe John Brownsdorf, are you here with us?
I'm here.
Fantastic. I'm going to open the floor up for anyone to speak for or against the new Arby's.
It's not a public hearing, Mr. Mr.
No, it's a site plan.
Just a site plan?
Yeah.
It says public request. You are correct. I read it wrong. Well, are you here to answer any questions, John, if we have any?
Yes, I do. Or yes, I did. Pardon me.
Fantastic. Kathy, you took this to plan zoning. Is there anything you want to say?
There was nothing that we discussed, really. It was pretty cut and dry.
It was pretty dry. David?
I just want to point out to the board that, you know, we hate to see a building burn down, but it will be a brand-new-style store, so it'll be really nice, including the site plan. They're consolidating driveways to move the driveway to the northeast corner, make it a little bit easier for traffic to get out and get back to the interstate without being forced to go west on 92 Highway. They'll also install a sidewalk along the street fundages, so it'll be a benefit to the city.
Yeah. We got a motion here?
Yeah, so there's a motion approving the commercial site plan is in order. That their August 8th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission, voted unanimously to recommend approval of the site plan, subject to staff comments, and you've updated those. So motion is in order.
I move that we approve the site plan as presented.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we need to pull board?
No, we don't.
Okay. All right. Well, John, it looks like there was no questions for you. Thanks for being on with us and doing a good job of presenting that to planning and zoning for us.
All right. Thank you.
Moving on. Next is Mark Riles with Easy Storage at 425 CMBR Drive. An at-risk permit request brought to the city. David, would you like to explain that to us?
I don't know if you want Jim to do the staff memo, or at least what was in the agenda, but
Good.
Mark Riles brought a site plan, a rezoning slash site plan, a site plan to the city at, I think, in the last month, in July. He's been working on getting his plans prepared and contractors lined up to begin work. And I think it's, he can address the board and tell you issue his timeline, but he is requesting an at-risk permit to start work on the site prior to issuance of a building permit. We've not received building permit plans at this point. We did receive updated civil plans from his engineer last, well, we received after hours Wednesday, escorted to our city engineer last Thursday morning to begin their review. Those civil plans would include site improvements, so parking lot, grading, driveways. There's a stormwater, underground stormwater facility. So those civil plans cover the site development. We're still awaiting building permit plans for the actual structures on that site. He's requesting permission for an at-risk permit to start that civil work before a building permit can be issued.
Okay. No?
Staff recommendation on that would be if we have a normal, we have a normal process for building permits. You know, after a site plan is approved, then plans get submitted for a building permit. That's the normal process. The at-risk process is not really part of the normal process, so staff recommendation would be to follow the normal process. Yeah, if the board wants to consider an at-risk permit for the proposed improvements, then staff will say at least, we need to at least wait until the civil plans have been approved so that we can issue a notice to proceed with any of the site work as proposed.
Yes. And Mr. Board President, we did have a conference with our new city attorney, and Jeff Dean is here tonight to explain. When we talk to our attorneys, they see that none of their clients actually use an at-risk process like this, and they have some different ideas about how they might approach this. But, and I think we've advised Mr. Riles that
Well, I may, I think I may be confused on something. Yeah, let's, I may take 20 seconds, and then I'll let Mary Claire speak to everything on there. We're not going, we're not going for the at-risk permit in order to start the building process early. All of the, whether it's the site plan, the DNR, the SWIP, everything we have to have, even the building plans and the concrete plans usually have to be simultaneously submitted at the same time. What we're attempting to do is to break only the building plan away from that until later on when we receive them. And when I spoke with David, he said you would have to do the at-risk permit in order to do that. We're not attempting to skew or, you know, get around this process or start building or put bulldozers out there right away. We're just trying to get all the civvles. Once Carney review engineers have gone over everything and said it's okay and be able to break the actual building plan away from the other ones as far as, because it's going to take us, at this point, they don't know if it's three months, if it's six months, before we receive the final actual building plan. But it's identical to what you all had seen as far as the elevations, the sizes. So it's identical, just the stamped engineering plans is going to have the position of the studs, the bolts, the nuts that are used inside. Metal is very, very difficult to work with right now for us to get anything. But Mary, Mary Claire could speak more to it, but we're not chasing the at-risk permit to get in there, because I will not build anything without a permit or anything like that. It's just too risky. It's just not something I would do at any point in time. But she could speak a little bit more to it and maybe make better sense of it than what I just did. But yeah, that's what I, we're not trying to do that. We don't want to start work on the property. It would be nice to, but all those plans have to be approved first. We just want to break that piece away from it so we can actually get these in and get them approved. And then when we get to that point, we are ready to go, since it takes such a long, extensive lead time to get those metal buildings in. So, but yeah, Mary, is she on right now?
She is on. I was getting ready to ask her.
Yeah. Real quick, because yeah, we don't want to start doing anything like that.
Yeah.
So.
Mary, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Mary, please address the board with where we're at on this and be open to answering any questions that the board might have.
Sure. I think what we have done, we have full civil site plans, and they have been submitted. And the condition right now, and this is not unusual for just this site. I actually have two projects in the KC Metro, KCK, and in Grandview, where they had to request this similar thing, where we have the site improvement package, which is permitted separately from the building itself, because the lead time for building materials right now is just nuts. It's six months, sometimes longer if you've got a large metal building. And so since it takes, you know, three, four months to complete all the site work in preparation for the building anyway, cities have said, all right, we will allow you to have your site improvement permit, and you can do everything. You have the grading, the storm drainage, your parking lot, you know, the concrete, the drives, but you can't come up out of the ground. And then when it gets to a point where you have your information from the people actually designing the building, they submit that separately and receive a building permit. And by the time we get that, then the site work's done, and we can just, they deliver the materials and they go. And it's kind of a unfortunate condition of where things are right now in the construction industry. There's a lot of items that have horrible lead times, like transformers and streetlight poles, you know, all that kinds of stuff. But our plan or our hope is, I mean, what we're doing is we're not asking for a permit today. We're asking for permission to pursue a separate, separate permit for the site improvements. And they will be fully reviewed, you know, address any comments. Does that explain things a little more?
Any questions from the board?
I guess. So being in this trade, I have heard of this process one other time. And I will tell you that in that particular time, it, it came back to haunt us because the buildings changed, and because the site work was already done, they wound up having to rip out some of the site work to make the new buildings work. And, you know, if we're talking about putting in driveways and drive aisles and all the concrete, you leave a building platform for a metal building, and it can't, it can't shift. It has to go in that footprint. So if they can't get, are these red iron?
No. They're actually galvanized aluminum, and there's only certain structure sizes that we can get those in to fit on those pads, but we don't use the red iron or wood on those. You, so I, and I had mentioned to David, we were hoping to have the actual concrete footer plans in our hands. They're running behind on those. But like I was telling David and Mary Claire, just like I said a minute ago, we will not go forward with anything else. But this is going to be my sixth build on something like this, and fifth by myself. But I've never had them change. I could see how another building, you could possibly run into changes on it. But we couldn't go forward with another size anyways without going in front of everyone. And I, I don't want to complicate things too much, but the only other issue that we did see, or I saw, just because of my experience dealing with this over the years, we were recently told that as far as the metal goes, the main manufacturing plant that's out of Mexico, in December, they do not have any more metal. If we were to get everything approved at a later date, start the work on it, and then order the metal, we may be sitting for six months, 12 months, we don't know. Because right now, metal can't ship through certain countries with certain rules because of the new green laws that they have. So the allocation of metal has almost disappeared. So that's another thing, and I didn't want to run into a extended, lengthy process. If we're able to tell them, yes, we're good on it, and I can put a deposit based on the plans that you all already approved, I feel comfortable doing that. But I really didn't want to do it. I don't like to take too many risks, but, but I'm not planning on building anything without a permit or without review engineering. But yeah, it's just a standard. Every building size that you all saw, that is exactly what it is. That's the footprint of it, because we can't really change anything. We could, but I mean, the bank would never allow it, you know, for us to buy separate-sized buildings. And David and the review engineer, once they saw it, everything would stop before it went any further. So, but yeah, that was the only other thing we were looking at. And in 10 years, I've never seen anything like this. So this is the first time I've ever had to ask Alder, the Board of Alder, for anything like this before. Usually, this is a simple, four-way process. Everything's in hand. You just go with it, and it's a done deal. But it has become significantly more challenging here in the last 18 months to do anything like this. But I wanted to make sure that everything kind of had a good segue or everything worked well, so we don't have a site that's there dumping off 18 truckloads of metal, you know, and grass or in the mud. And now we've got to move it to work around it, and it causes even bigger problems. Or run into an issue where there's nothing available at that time. But this at least gives us a little bit of leniency, being able to submit them separately. But nothing will change as far as that goes. That other project, the metal that you dealt with, is it storage buildings or was it other metal buildings?
No, it was, it was storage buildings, but it was red iron, so.
Yeah, some of those companies are a little bit trickier to deal with. That's why I try to stay away from them, because you don't know what you're going to get, so.
Where do you get your buildings from?
Tracty in Sun Prairie, Wisconsin. So same thing as Bulldog Stores, the same manufacturer. Don't think Rudy Nipiers is the same, but yeah. And then the ones we have in Excelsor, they're Tracty as well, those buildings. So we just stepped with the same manufacturer all the way through all my processes. But like I said, we're not trying to skew or complicate the process or anything, but I want to make sure we have a smooth transition and we don't run into problems on our end. But yeah, we don't want to build anything without permits or anything. Just, yeah, just every city's a little bit different, how everything gets turned in. And I wasn't aware that Carney makes you do everything at the same time. Excelsor allows us to break it up. Clay County allows us to break it up. I haven't done Kansas City, but Liberty did years ago as well. But we didn't run into these problems either, so.
Any idea on when the footing plans are going to be available?
They told me they could be available tomorrow through the 29th of August. And I was talking to David before the meeting that if you have a meeting on the 29th, and I have him in hand, it wouldn't be a bad idea just to look at him. The review engineer for Carney would still have to look at it. David would still have to look at it. But another thing we were trying to beat was the increases. If we're able to lock in the concrete with these individuals, we should be okay before they do their next price increase, which is another 20% to 25% on September 1st. But we should be okay to receive this. But exactly the way the footer is set up is going to be identical. You know, you guys have already seen the buildings and the elevations and everything. They will be identical to that. They can't change, so.
So you're saying if we wait, it's going to cost you money, and it's going to take a lot longer? Is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, September 1st, concrete through Geiger, Pennies, and all of them, they're going to see a cost increase of 20% to 25%. It's a big enough job where it would probably extend into November. Then we get another 15% increase. Usually, I wouldn't worry too much about this, but we're doing 110,000 square foot of concrete. You start adding on, you know, half million dollars here and there, and it could really cripple a project pretty badly doing something like that. So they, they told me, Geiger said, and through the contractors, if we're able to lock in knowing that they're going to be on that site within a couple of months, they will lock in those prices to make sure they stay fixed for us. They can't guarantee the winter rates, but they will guarantee us that the 25% won't be added on if we can do it that way, so. But the only thing we will not see until later on are those building plans, because we're being told December on it. But we wouldn't receive buildings for this project until, it'd probably be around March or April of next year, which it wouldn't hurt my feelings, because I'd rather assemble them when the weather's nice instead of snow and ice and everything else like that, so. Yeah, sorry to bring this matter to you guys. I've never had to ask for anything like this before, but I'm just trying to make sure we are in the best position possible, so.
Mr. Board President, we do have our city attorney here that has some comments to make about it. And maybe he has some ideas, after listening to all this, how he might see our way through on it.
Well, my name is Jeff Dean. I work with Auburn Municipal Law, and this is our first meeting, so nice to meet everybody. I think you guys might have only met Joe and some other folks, but I'm one of the eight attorneys in the office. I know some of the folks from before, but I've talked with Jim quite a bit. But look at this process to begin with. I think the, all of the things that Mr. Riles has described are terrible market conditions that apply unfortunately to pretty much everybody in the market. And if you look at this section 500.025 for at-risk permits, it talks about, they should be in very limited circumstances for good cause shown. And the first requirement is the nature of the emergency or compelling reason why such permit should be issued is something that he has to show. And while I understand from a business standpoint, it certainly feels compelling. He's not dissimilar from anybody else trying to put a building up right now. Costs are going up for all of us, whether it's the grocery store or unfortunately at the, at the concrete site. And so it doesn't fit in my mind into what an emergency is from a city standpoint. In terms of compelling, well, it doesn't really rise above what somebody else looks at. And we give variances for other things like for our zoning laws and stuff. You talk to somebody who comes in and say, we have a restriction that says a sign can only be six feet tall. And they come in and say, well, I've got this piece of property, and the only place I could put my sign is down in the ditch, a six-foot sign, you can't even see it. So we say, okay, this is something unique to you. We're going to give you a variance to go a little higher so you can reach that same level playing field. Really what he's asking is to jump in front of the people in line at the other places and get his stuff locked in. And I understand that. I think all of us can. If I could lock in my gas price three months from now, I'd do it. But we can't be determining winners and losers with this at-risk permit. The things he has to show in his written application is the nature of the emergency. Read that for yourself, see if you believe he's met that. He has to acknowledge the outstanding items necessary to obtain a full building permit. I'm not sure I follow how that's been shown. And he's got a lot of ideas and some assurances, but then you go on to the next one. The date when outstanding items will be completed. Well, a couple of layers of problems there. We don't, since the plans haven't been received yet, we don't know what deficiencies he might have to correct or changes, if any. So we can't know until we even know when the plans are going to get here, and they can be reviewed, when the outstanding items will be completed. And at this point, the best guess we have is, well, three, four months down the road, we might get some plans. Some are coming, there's some plan coming.
They've been, they've been ordered, yeah.
Yeah, but the actual building plans, I understand your staff needs to have reviewed by the company, are still at a date unknown. So, you know, again, it's hard to see how this meets the at-risk thing. He also has to understand and acknowledge that this is, if we provided this, it's not, not something that guarantees a full permit and then runs right into the next one. As a matter of fact, if you offer him this at-risk permit and something goes wrong, he has to put all the work that he does under this permit. He can do work under this permit. Obviously, he didn't want to, and I get that. But if you grant the at-risk permit, he can do work. And if he does that work, and later we don't get, give him a permit, or something falls through, or the project falls apart, he has to go back and put the site back in the way it was originally graded, which I'm not sure I want that.
We can't do work without a permit, though, correct? The at-risk doesn't give us a permit.
It doesn't give you a permit, but the, but the at-risk permit allows you to do some work. And that's why, if you meet all the other things, which is basically
I'm sorry to talk out of turn. I was just, yeah, I just, because, yeah, we're not planning on without anything being reviewed, but.
Yeah, yeah. And so then you come down to the last couple of items, which just says, it says, construction is subject to all required inspections by the city. I think he has admitted he's going to do that, and I believe him. So what we're looking at here is, I sympathize. He's trying to find a way to get this project in. I get that. I don't think this is the lever we use to move this rock, though. What we're really asking is to change the way Carney does, thanks to more like some other cities, where they bifurcate it. And Mr. Lehman might have some ideas about that, but, you know, it sounds like other cities do allow you to do, you know, parcel plans out. We don't offer that quite yet, and that's one of the suggestions I would have, is maybe look at our process and see how to fix this for the next time. They're just, the way it's written here, if you're just in a court of law, which is not a court of law, if you're just in a court of law, I can't, I can't look at you in good conscience and say, he's met all these things, this is burdened proof. Now, if you want to provide him some relief, you probably can fashion a way to provide him some relief. He's talked about some conditions he's willing to live with, and you could probably fashion something that some sort of agreement that maybe does that. I understand, if I checked correctly, the site work and the dirt work, but not the stormwater and impervious surface work. That's where work can be done based on the plans we have. Is that a fair statement?
Well, I know the civil plans, he's requested for anything that is on the ground, so. Grading, curbs, you know, drive aisles, driveway. He's got an underground stormwater facility.
And if, and if we're not going to be able to do
All that work.
If we're not going to do the at-risk permits, it just is not the, this is the wrong-sized object to stick in this hole. If we could fashion something where we said, okay, maybe go through with the grading and stuff, understanding that, you know, if it all falls through, you've got to put it back the way it was, because that's like every shovel you move, really, if things go badly, you've got to be prepared and available to put it back. And don't expect that to happen at all, but it's the risk that runs with that. And maybe there's a way to fashion this that helps meet the M we're really looking for, which is how to, how to help him get past the market problems that affect everybody while still satisfying us, where we can look at the plans and make sure everything's done appropriately. I don't think the at-risk permit is the way to do it. It might be the only official channel we have right now. But I don't think he meets the requirements for it from a strict standpoint. And so the question becomes, you know, as much as I'd like to say, let's figure out how to help this guy, every builder in town's going to have that. Everybody's trying to put something in. They're all dealing with the same shortfalls. The metal shortfalls for everybody are going to affect all of us, whether it's getting a new washing machine in six months, or whether it's getting the metal to do this, or the red iron that Mr. Lehman was talking about. I mean, this is the new world we live in, and we're going to have to do some changes to our code to maybe change the way we've done things in the past to make it a little bit easier. But I just don't think on this, as the first guy in, maybe this is where we learn our lesson to try and fix it. And maybe that's a reason to give him a break and figure something out. But certainly, I don't think his request, through no fault of his own, meets the requirements we have in our section here. So that's what I would say about, about the process. I think there are things we can do. Unfortunately, it can't be done tonight to try and change the process for the next person down the road. And I realize that is cold comfort. But if we can fashion some sort of relief for him, you know, that's up to you guys from the political side. But from a legal side, I couldn't sign off on this and say, yep, qualifies for this, go forward with our blessing. That's not to say if you have a political change that you want to make or some accommodation that you want to make, if you couldn't make something work, we're happy to help with that as well. So if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. And certainly, you should be able to rebut, and rebut. should be able to rebut, and rebut.
Well, I had one, yeah, I had one comment that maybe you could kind of, David and I had spoken about, I didn't want to wear these guys out. One thing, we weren't crazy about the at-risk permit, how it sounded and everything from the beginning, but it was the only avenue that was, that we could see that was given to us, we've never run into this anywhere else, and David and I had spoke about this earlier, and he assured me that this wouldn't be an issue. I didn't want to be back in front of you all in six, 180 days or 366 days saying, "Hey, the project's not completed, my permit's only good for this amount of time, we don't have this yet, now I have to be back in front of you to get another approval," because that's the way the actual building through P&amp;Z, I think the permits and everything, it says in there, if you don't get it finished in this time period, you have to go back in front of them again. And that's another thing that I was trying to avoid as well after I read that on there, but David assured me that, you know, that wouldn't be an issue, we could make it around that if we needed to, but, yeah, we just weren't crazy about the at-risk, because the way it sounds, it's just kind of different, but like he was talking about, you know, there's a lot of other places that we've worked that it just all goes in separately, but anyways, I agree with what he said as well, there's all kinds of problems you can run into if you're not set up properly to get that done, so.
Well, as you heard, our city attorney hates that at-risk process, and if there is a way we can, you know, accelerate an ordinance change that might happen, you know, to address excavation permits, that's what I understood could be done.
I don't necessarily hate it, I just don't think that this, I'm not sure what would fit this, I mean, I'm trying to figure, that's why I asked when I came in, what prompted, something had to prompt the passing of this particular thing, and if I knew, if we knew what that was, we might have an idea of what.
Well, it was the Price Chopper Building, and it was the biggest thing in town, and they had some issue of plan completion problems, didn't they?
From my memory, it also included a plat, so, as part of the plat, you know, you can't issue a permit until there is a lot, and you can't have a lot until the plat is recorded. There were public improvements to be made, a brand-new street, some water and sewer extensions, and until those public improvements were completed and accepted by the city.
We couldn't issue a permit.
A plat could not be recorded and a permit could not be issued. They didn't want to tear up a brand-new street with heavy concrete trucks doing this giant 50,000-square-foot store, so.
We always solve the last problem, that's the problem, we need to figure out some way, if there's some way to help him now with the power that we do have, and then we go forward, we've got to try and think of not only the problem we're solving, but how to, to the state, you can't look forward, what else can we do to give us flexibility the next time around? And there may be some here, I'm not sure what exactly it looks like, but that's a little.
Well, isn't the issuance of a building permit a ministerial duty, that, and wouldn't, wouldn't he have an expectation, because he has his site plan approved, that he could make his, place his orders comfortably with a reasonable expectation that he will receive those building permits based on what he has submitted?
Yeah.
And isn't that the same as what he's asking for? He's asking for an at-risk process, he just doesn't get a piece of paper that he has to, that would bind him, or that would give us, when we give him assurances, we're going to say on that piece of paper, "We assume no risk, it's all your risk."
Yeah, that's kind of what we say in this process.
And so how is that going to be good for you to take to anyone if we're saying, "You're on your own anyway, you do have the assurances of the city that we have approved your site plan today." I mean, it was approved, when was it approved, the last meeting?
In July, yeah, it was last month.
Okay, it's been through planning and zoning and through the Board of Aldermen. So you have an approved site plan.
Does that give him permission to start moving dirt?
Well, I don't know about moving dirt, but certainly, I was hearing him placing orders was his problem.
Yeah, and it really depends on what.
That's when I heard the imminent deadlines was placing orders.
The only thing, the only constraints that we have right now, and I didn't want to get too in-depth because it gets pretty complicated dealing with the whole process, with, and I, the building permit itself will not be issued until all the parts of it are together. The building plan, the footers, the SWIP and everything is put in there at one time, and that's the only thing we were trying to do was separate that process to a certain extent.
Well, you can't move dirt without a SWIP.
Yeah, no, no, that's why.
I mean, you know, that's got to be approved.
Yeah, and we don't want to do.
The civil plans got to be approved, and none of those, do we have a SWIP yet?
Yes.
Is it approved?
Probably part of her submittal.
Okay.
Yeah, all groundwork has been submitted, but believe me when I say this, I would, we will never do any work without a permit, it's just not going to happen. I'm not that risky of a person, but it's just with the building plans and all the plans having to be submitted at one time, instead of having time in between submittals, that's what the challenge is. And that's really the only thing, I could go place orders and get things going, and like he stated, it's a financial burden on myself and it causes me problems more than anything, but I don't want my financial problems causing site problems later on by not being able to acquire certain things that we may not be able to see, you know, in six months from now or seven months from now. I don't want an ISO being over there, I'm sure this, everything's going to pan out fine, maybe I worry myself a little too much, but I would like to make sure things go through properly. But when I talked to David about this, I was just kind of surprised that there wasn't a way to submit all civil, all groundwork at one time, get that approval going, and that the building and the footer were separated on there, because we, yeah, I've never run into it where it's all together at one time, because it's really challenging to do that all at the same time, and especially right now, it becomes pretty challenging.
Can you clarify for the board and for me, what you're asking permission for? Are you asking for permission if the civil plans are, have a contractor go out on the site and start moving dirt? Is that your desire right now?
No, so the plans that have been submitted to the city, everything's not there yet, you would have to have the footer plans and the concrete plans for those buildings that would have to go through review engineering. That's going to be August 29th, it could be sooner than that. That would all have to be submitted to the City of Carney and approved. If that were to be approved and the city was okay with it, we could start that work as long as all that matched up with what it was supposed to do, and the buildings, when they would come in, in that time period, whatever it is, and I'm sorry to be so general on it, we just don't know when it's going to be. We know that our plans, they're ordered, they're supposed to be here between October and December, but they have to match exactly what those footer plans are that are on there. We're trying to make sure that this process, that once everything groundwork is approved and reviewed by the engineers, that process can start, so when the building process, when those buildings come in, everything's ready to go and set up on there. And that's what we've done at other places in the past, but it didn't look like in Carney that was an option to do it that way.
So if the ground, if the plans for the, let's say, the plans for the grading and your stormwater mitigation and your driveway and your drive aisles were completed and our engineers said they looked good, would it be your desire to have a contractor then move out onsite, move on to the site and start that work if those plans were approved before the building plans were submitted?
Yeah, we would have to wait till verification that the buildings are in process of being produced, that's what I would, and in timeframe, again, I know it gets sticky on there, but I want to make sure that everything is.
I'm just trying to clarify that if you were in a position to have a contractor onsite doing that work between now and December, that is what you're asking?
Yeah, if we were in that situation where we could do the work, everything was approved, we had permits for all the groundwork, water mitigation and everything there, and we knew we were in good shape as far as the buildings go, because they have to meet a certain code for you all anyways, there's no way we can get around it, yes, we would plan on doing that, but only in the circumstance where everything was issued and we had permits to do so. If not, I wouldn't even try to chase that, it's just too big of a risk to do anything like that.
Maybe I'm just confused, I'll just ask, now, what is it you're asking permission to do, and is it you that needs some assurances from the board, or is your suppliers need assurances that they, you know, what exactly are we asking, because I'm trying to find the permit, the thing that you're unable to do that we need to give you the permit to do.
So, when we were submitting everything, David said that everything has to be submitted at one time, building plan, footer, everything that, you know, that needs to be to complete that facility over there. What we're attempting to do is, is if we're allowed to, once permitted, once reviewed and everything, be able to get that groundwork done, make sure everything's completed, so when we do get everything else in, we're ready to go with that. So, we're trying to separate the actual building, building permit from the process, from the rest of the stuff, because the lead time's too long.
We can do that with a change to the code, but I'm trying to figure out if that's, if it will help you or hurt you in the short term, I mean, is that the word?
Yeah.
If it's a matter of you're just going to get your stuff completed, and by the time we get to the 29th, we sort of know what you're looking at, and we can approve something at any time, I suppose, and maybe even a change to the code that would allow it to be bifurcated, if that makes sense, I don't know what the, all ramifications are of that, but I'm just trying to figure out what it is that you're, "I need to do it right now, I can't do it right now because this permit's missing."
Yeah.
I'm not really hearing that, I'm hearing more a matter of, "I need to make my orders" and stuff, which I get, and for that, do you need assurances, do you need a piece of paper taken, somebody that says?
No.
The city's approval for something, so I'm just trying to help figure out what it is that can get.
Yeah, so everything right now, David has everything except for the footer plan and the actual building plan, but we can't, the way the rules are written or the process in Carney is, we can't go any further. We're stuck until December when that final building plan comes in. We have the elevation, we have the layout, everything's been approved, but we need that final stamped engineer plan with nut, bolt and everything on there in order to complete that process the way it's set up in Carney, so.
Mr. President, Mr. Edwards, I mean, if it doesn't have to be done tonight, we could probably get something through that meets with your approval for you to look at that would change the process, so by the time he's ready to move on that, a week, two weeks, a month, I don't, it depends on how it goes, that we have that ability to bifurcate if it's what you want to do. That's my concern, is that I don't want to, if we just do something tonight, it's not quite the right fix to get the at-risk, but we may be able to still get one that gets in.
Yeah, that's fine with me, we're not looking to get on that site and start moving dirt and changing stuff.
Could you have it ready by the 29th?
We can certainly, especially if I've got some direction from Mr. Edwards and everybody about what you're looking for, yes, we can.
I'll need David's advice to give you the direction, but.
Yeah, if it's something you're willing to do, we can get it done, and we've got plenty of people to do it, so, is that something that you think, do you understand enough of what he's looking for to make the?
Kind of, I just want to know, is he trying to be in a position where he has a contractor onsite doing site prep work on the property, like moving the dirt, installing the detention, before we are able to issue a building permit? Okay? And if that, if all it is is plan review of civil plans, we can do that right now, we don't care, if we're not issuing any work for somebody to go out on the site to do anything, that's okay, we can review those plans and, you know.
But you don't have a permit mechanism, the way I understand it, to give him an excavation permit for that.
That's correct, that's why I was asking him to clarify what he's actually asking of the board. If it's just a plan review, there's no reason to ask the board for anything, we would just handle plan review, and he can say, "Well, my civil plans are ready, but my building plans won't be ready later, do you mind going ahead and reviewing my civil plans to make sure they are all in order, and then when I get my building permit in, I'll package those two sets together?"
Yeah.
And submit a building.
But we don't want to approve footers tonight when there's no footer plans.
Right, exactly.
Right.
Understood, 100%.
If his desire is to have a contractor, some contractor doing any level of work on that site before we can issue a full-blown building permit, well, then that's where the at-risk comes in, that's what I was asking. Please tell us what work you want done. If you want a guy moving dirt to grade the site, well, that would be part of your at-risk permit request.
Yeah, the only.
If they want somebody onsite to install a stormwater detention facility, because it's a different contractor, but you're trying to get that done and out of the way, that's part of the scope of your at-risk permit. If it's just a plan review, that really doesn't matter, it's somebody onsite doing work that would have otherwise been authorized under the full-blown building permit, then we do need to break that off, and the steps we have are at-risk permit procedures.
So, and I think what he's wanting is what I've referred to in a past life as a land disturbance permit, which allows them to grade and put in everything below grade, but nothing above grade. But, I will say that in a past life, when we did those, they absolutely 100% had to have engineer-stamped footing plans in order to be able to do that. And so, I've heard of land disturbance permits that include the civil, include the footing plans, nothing above grade is.
Yeah, we won't, we wouldn't even touch it in our permit, because that's just for three-quarters of an acre of grade, you're just moving the dirt on it, there's a whole other host of problems that comes in, and we want to make sure if we did any grading, that we could get it covered up, you know, as soon as possible, because it just caused a lot of problems. Simply put, all I'm really attempting to do is be able to, before winter comes, which it may happen, it may not, be able to get the groundwork done and the water mitigation in, and the concrete finished up and be able to walk in with one contractor and feel good about it, and, but it's just holding us up because the plans for the metal, we're going to see them, they guarantee us we'll see them by December, but that's, it's bad, because it's a three-week process usually, but the way the process is in Carney, everything has to be done at one time together, and I won't bore you with some of the other cities and what I've run into, but a lot of them, we are allowed to break them apart to a certain extent. Obviously, you'd want all your groundwater mitigation and everything, and footer plans, like we've talked about, because I wouldn't even do that without footer plans, it's just crazy, and, yeah, yeah, I want to roll the dice, I go to Las Vegas and, you know, try it there, but that's ultimately what I'm looking for, is so we can get groundwork completed if everything is reviewed and done, but we can't really get that all reviewed and permitted, because the final building plan has to be in, in order to do that full submittal of everything, so.
And Mr. Rouse, do you think that if we wait till August the 29th, you'd have time to still catch the train leaving town?
Oh, yeah, I'd have to, it's just, it is crazy right now, really, as I've never run into anything like this before, you know? Yeah, it's just running me into everything and these costs and the volatility, and we don't know where we're going to get, you know, anything else, and it's getting pretty rough to get anything done, so, I have a feeling this is going to happen in the future as well, so.
Then I'd recommend to the board that we authorize our city attorney to work with David Pavlich, and coming up with a permit process.
Maybe it sounds like a land disturbance permit.
Land disturbance.
Yeah, we can get that pretty easily from the state of Missouri, that's a pretty simple deal.
Well.
Oh, a Carney one, okay, not a Missouri one, okay.
You, instead of against you, to try and figure out what the process needs to look like, so we can get you, you have to be the test case, but for the work you do, what can we change in it? That's what I'm understanding, because we want to figure out some way to make this work.
How about, if on the 29th, are you having a meeting on the 29th as well?
We are.
I mean, if I came in with, you know, so you guys could see footer plans and concrete, because I didn't want to come, I told David earlier, I wanted to push this on to the 29th anyways, but I didn't want to take it off of your agenda and make anyone upset, but I also don't want to wear you all out with silly stuff like this, so, but it was a little too late, because it was after 2:00 on Friday, so.
Our boards have been known to make special meetings for developers and builders, so.
Yeah, I just didn't, I just didn't want to.
That can't happen.
Yeah, so the 29th would be fine, I just want to make sure it's just, you know, it's.
We can work with you, you take the lead obviously, but I'll support you, and as long as we keep the lines of communication open, we can have something to look at and give them something to consider, so.
That's fine, there may not be anything that can be done, and I understand it 100%, so.
You might get Mary Claire involved as well, Mary, did you hear me?
Yes, I'm happy to provide whatever you need to help however I can.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, too.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
All right. That is the end of 5B, there's no public hearing, all business, new business, all to be in discussion, Jerry?
I just would like to say that next week is back-to-school for our students, so if everyone will be aware and maybe plan that extra minute or two in your commute in the morning and the evening to watch out for students, I wish all of them a healthy, wonderful, new school year.
Kathy?
I don't have anything this evening.
David?
I don't have anything.
Well, I just want to say that Carney was hopping Saturday night, if you were sitting at home, you missed out, there was a lot going on around town, we had farmer's markets, kind of stayed late with a whole bunch of other things, we had live music up there, Hazley's, they had live. live music up there, Hazley's, they had live music. If you didn't know that Brian Hamm could sing, well, he was doing karaoke actually for everybody, and you know what, he's not that bad a singer, but he had a great night up there and a lot of the shops were open, Fat Boys was busy, the whole place was filled up. Carney really looked alive Saturday night, so it was really, really good to see. So with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.